Good morning, everybody. We're going to call to order the Board of Commissioners meeting at 10:10. We'll extend the opportunity for public comment at this time. Hearing no one offering public comment, we do want to note for the record that we did receive a public comment email from Jennifer Cornwell of Spring Mills, and she had some feedback related to the COVID-19 block grant. So we will be entering that into our minutes and accepting that public comment and acknowledging that we have received it and have reviewed it. We will accept public comment for items as they are under discussion. If anybody would have public comment, please feel free to unmute yourself and offer public comment. Hearing no further public comment at this time for items not on the agenda, we'll move to the minutes from the Thursday, July 16th Board of Commissioners meeting. Would there be a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes from July 16th.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Moving into our COVID-19 planning response, we do have some personnel items that we're going to consider at this time. But we do have with us the Director of Transportation, Dave Lamson, on the phone. Good morning, Dave.
Morning, everyone. Thank you for having me.
Sure. We have these five items to consider, Dave, if you'd want to give us any context for these items.
Just a continuation of the furloughs that we currently have had since back in April, I believe, of the five individuals, four vehicle operators and one department clerk in the office. We're just not up to speed yet with trips and all these people are at home and safe. So I would just like to see their furloughs extended through the end of August, through the August 29th timeframe, and then revisit it in another month and see where we're at.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Any questions for Dave on those items?
Maybe more of a statement, Dave. Just thanks for your hard work and the work of your staff. Realize that you're in a situation where you're running maybe about half of capacity, and it can be difficult to run an operation at that level.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner Higgins. We're creeping up on, you know, we're breaking that threshold now and just see an uptick every day. But, you know, with situations in the county as they are, it may make people not want to travel. We just, it's a day-to-day thing. The majority of the trips are medical, you know, physicians and visits such as that. But all these individuals understand this and they're fine with that. We're just, you know, with the staff on board currently, we're covering vacations and all the likes of that. It, some days is a little tighter with people taking some time off, but we're covering that and just would like to see these extended to help us in that respect. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve. Any other questions for Dave on those? Okay, we'll then recognize the sheriff. You do have an item, Brian, related to this for Mr. David Daria. And we do believe that we also had a memo from the sheriff on that, and so...
Yeah, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
We can, yes. Not a worry.
All right. Now, I asked the board to bring David Daria off furlough. He is currently at the airport, put him on part-time furlough. The morning shifts at the airport are starting to pick back up. They're going in about five or six in the morning, where they were going in about eight. But also with losing Deputy Wolf on the 10th, around the 7th, as being his last day as a full-time security deputy, instead of trying to replace that position right now, I'm just going to use the guy we already have on the furlough and bring him off furlough, and he can fill at the airport and at the security as needed. So I'm just trying to save some money that way by not hiring another person full-time to absolutely need to start, and court picks up even more. So I'm trying to get by like this. So I want to play that by ear for now, but I'd like to bring him off part-time furlough and put him back to full-time.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff. Any feedback questions for the sheriff on that item? Okay, hearing none. Well, before we look for a motion, we'll just again extend to all the department heads, elected officials, and our staff for the continued sacrifices they're making in order to be appreciative of the county budget and our limitations when it comes to the work that's currently being done. So we appreciate everything that everybody's doing, Dave, Brian, thank you, everybody else. We really, really do appreciate it, and we do recognize it. If there's no other comments, we'll look for a motion to approve those personnel requests.
Motion to approve the personnel requests from department heads and elected officials.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on those items? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay, we do have a consideration or discussion here, potentially an action for the extension of temporary furloughs, part-time reduction of hours for our non-court-related offices. Margaret, for the individuals that we did not take direct action on, is there a recommendation for how we should proceed with those items?
Yes, thank you. After consultation with the department heads and the offices involved, we would make the recommendation, given that we think work will be coming forward, but not quite yet, to extend the furloughs to August 29th. We would be consistent then with the action taken for the Department of Transportation, Office of Transportation. And it would also give us a fair amount of time to really evaluate what work may be back to a normal level, if at all.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. We should recognize that every single one of these individuals, in terms of the healthcare coverage that they had prior to the pandemic and prior to them starting on a furlough or partial reduction of hours, is still intact. Okay, thank you.
That is correct.
Okay. Any questions, comments on extension of the furloughs for non-court-related office or partial reduction of hours until, is that a Friday, Margaret, that date?
I believe it's a Saturday, the end of the pay period, but Kristen could confirm.
Okay. All right, so that's Saturday.
End of the pay period.
End of the pay period. Okay, thank you.
Saturday, August 29th.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions, further questions, discussion on that?
Seems like a reasonable suggestion.
Okay. All right. Would there be a motion to that effect?
All right. So motion to extend the temporary furloughs and partial reduction of hours for non-court-related offices until Saturday, August, I think it was the 27th?
29th.
29th, Saturday, August 29th.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on those items? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion is carried. At the chair's discretion, we're going to jump over this, the county relief block grant updates at this time. We'll come back to those. We're going to enter into personnel items. We have, for human services, we have some items here for DYS and MHID. We'll reckon, I don't think we have Julia Sprinkle on the phone with us. If she is on the phone, she can unmute herself and join in, but this would be for consideration of the approval for Marissa Tobias, full-time caseworker two, consideration of the approval of Jennifer Long, full-time caseworker two, consideration of the approval of the appointment of Cody Brown, full-time caseworker one, consideration of the approval of two personnel requisitions for full-time caseworker ones. So there are five items there for CYS. Hearing, we'll offer the opportunity for any questions, feedback on these items. They look all standard from this end. Hearing no discussion, is there a motion to approve those five items?
Motion to approve the five items for CYS.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. For MHID, Natalie Corman, if you had anything you'd wanted to add to this, we'll extend the opportunity at this point.
Sure. We are just filling the new ID program specialist position that we had written into the Human Services Block Grant as well as to the county 2020 budget. This position will work directly out of our, what we call administrative entity, part of our intellectual disability services, be able to connect with families, intakes, do investigations, and really be a linkage to the family community in regards to services that intellectual disabilities offer. So we are pleased to bring Mary Ann from one department to another for this opportunity.
Thank you very much, Natalie. Any questions, comments for Natalie on that item? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Yes, there is. Let me toggle between screens here. Motion to approve the promotion change in department for Mary Ann Gilbert, full-time RSVP assistant to full-time ID program specialist one, MHID.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you, Natalie. For Human Resources, Kristen, we'll turn it over to you for these three items.
Okay. I've had some vacant floater positions for a while. We finally have some good applicants that have come in. We have conducted interviews. We have had a need for floaters, and just due to other obligations of our floaters, we don't always have them available. This will give us a pretty full complement of floaters, so hopefully more availability. They both have some office experience, and we actually have one that'll hopefully be starting an assignment next Tuesday.
Okay.
Approved.
All right, thank you, Kristen. So it looks like we are putting out a person, I think I know the answer to this, but just to double check, it looks like we're putting out a personnel requisition, and then we're hiring for that position. Can you, can you talk a little bit about why that is?
It is because we had the wrong PC number listed on our last requisition that was posted online. It was one that was already filled, so we just didn't have a rec on file for this correct PC number, so we want to correct that paperwork.
Okay, that's not the answer I thought it was. Okay, all right, sounds good. That sounds good. All right, so we have these three items. Would there be a motion to approve the three items for Human Resources?
Do you want me to motion on that?
Yeah, I think...
Yeah, give me a sec. There we go. The sun's starting to shine on my screen. Yes, motion to approve the three items for Human Resources.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on those items? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and those three items are approved. Thank you, Kristen. For our Conservation District, we'll welcome Jim Coslow, and Jim, we'll turn it over to you for a discussion on this item. Good morning.
Good morning. This is just a personnel requisition for our Nutrient Management Technician Two position, currently held by John Wadhah, who is retiring at the end of the month.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Any discussion questions on that, Commissioner? We know you're a, Dershowitz, we know that you're the representative from the commissioners. Anything you wanted to add to that?
We're all good.
Okay, sounds good. We'll look then for a motion.
Motion to approve the personnel requisition for a full-time nutrient management technician two, Conservation District.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay, thank you very much, Jim. Have a good day.
Thank you.
For our Correctional Facility, I do not believe that we have our warden or anybody from the Correctional Facility on the phone, but this would be for consideration of the approval of the personnel requisition of a full-time CO at the Correctional Facility. We also do have a public defender's item, and this would be for the consideration of the approval of a personnel requisition for a full-time assistant public defender, and this would be to fill the position that Laura Rupert would have just moved out of. Would there be a motion to approve those two items?
Motion to approve the personnel requisitions for a full-time corrections officer and additionally for a full-time assistant public defender.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. We have a report on our judicial personnel, and we have in our court administration office, President Judge Pam LaRusse has approved the personnel requisition for a full-time law clerk. We also have in the probation office that the President Judge has approved the personnel requisition for a full-time correctional parole officer. And also a report on the row office personnel listing, the sheriff has approved the change in status for John Wolf from full-time security officer to an on-call occasional security officer. Also, the sheriff has approved the personnel requisition for a full-time security officer in his department. Moving into the non-personnel items, we'll discuss now the 2021 holiday schedule, and Margaret will turn it over to you for any context on this item.
Thank you. Distributed with the agenda was a copy, is a copy of the 2021 proposed holiday schedule. Of note, it is representative of everything, all of the holidays provided in 2020, no changes or proposed changes in that regard. Just a highlight around the Christmas holiday, because Christmas falls on December 25th, and we provide the day before Christmas and the Christmas holiday, we're proposing to divide that between Friday, December 24th, and Monday, December 27th. That could be altered if you wanted to provide December 23rd and 24th, but usually when a holiday is observed on a Saturday, we observe it the day before, or if it's a Sunday, we observe it the day after. So this is a split. That would be the only thing I'd want to highlight.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. Do we know, we obviously, we have a lot of folks in the court administration, or I should say the courts, do we, do we know what AOPC's holiday schedule looks like, whether they're doing it on, how they're structuring it?
The courts actually look to us and look to the Board of Commissioners for approval first. They've actually reached out to us to see what decision you've made, and then they'll respond accordingly.
Okay, thank you. Any preference from the board? Are we okay with this recommendation?
I'm fine.
Yeah, it seems okay.
Okay. All right. We will then look for a motion to approve this 2021 holiday schedule.
Motion to approve the 2021 holiday schedule.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the holiday schedule? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you.
All right, for our Transportation Office, Dave, we'll turn it back to you if you'd like to give us any context for these items.
Yes, thanks again. We're obviously several months behind. We had this on our radar back in early March, and of course, we all know what happened. So we've obtained the possibility to get some replacement vehicles. The first two listed, the Ford Explorer and the Ford Fusion, would both go into our probation department to replace two of their vehicles that are in need of replacement. They're just, they've got higher mileage in excess of 140, 150,000 miles, 10 to 12 years old, both of them, and we need to get them some more reliable vehicles. The third one is a Chevy Maxi van, a 15-passenger van. That would go into transportation and serve a dual purpose. The one it would be replacing has been out of service as the transmission went out of it with 230,000 miles, and it's in process of being liquidated in our next auction. But it also gives us the opportunity to have a Maxi van when needed by any departments. Right now, we're a little short with that, so if somebody were to request one today, I would have to give them one that's in use, but high mileage and just not appropriate for long trips. The fourth one, another minivan, we've converted all of our meal routes to minivans. It's been very lucrative in many ways and saving money, ease of get-around for my drivers to get into tighter places. So this would give us the opportunity to pull one that we've actually put in service from the business fleet about a year ago, and it's, it's time to probably retire that van. So it would just give me that complement of minivans for the meal routes. We also use those on off days. DYS has needed one for transports, and we've been able to accommodate that. So we're not just using them the three days a week. They're in use more often when needed, but they're all in-kind purchases, and, you know, they have the vehicles there. Should we get approval, and we can go ahead and proceed to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions on the items for those vehicles? Okay, hearing none. Hearing none, would there be a motion to add that acquisition to next week's consent agenda?
Motion to add the acquisitions from Penn State to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you, Dave. We appreciate it.
Thank you all very much.
For housing, we do have a satisfaction piece, and we do want to recognize that Betsy Barton has joined us today. Congratulations, Betsy, on your new role in the Office of Planning and Community Development. Do you have anything to add for the satisfaction piece?
This is just for a rehab, core rehab satisfaction, and I appreciate your attention for it.
Okay, sounds good, sounds good. Would there be a motion to approve the satisfaction piece for Marie Wance in Aron'sburg?
Motion to approve the satisfaction piece for Marie Wance in Aron'sburg.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you for joining us, Betsy.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a discussion item, and then after we're done with this discussion item, we'll loop back to the COVID-19 planning and response. And in many ways, this item is a COVID-19 related item. So Margaret, any context on this? You can control traffic on who you want to turn the floor over to.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
The state has provided guidance to our Office of Aging now that we are in the green phase of operations under our COVID-19 situation, and our staff have worked very carefully to put together some proposals for the reopening of centers. Natalie can speak to what those activities have looked like and what days and how many people could potentially be involved, but this is something that needs some special consideration given the constituencies involved. So I'm going to turn it over to Natalie, and she can walk you through what the preparations have looked like to date.
Thank you, Margaret. So on June 1st, the Department of Aging released a guidance to Office of Aging on the reopening of our senior centers across the Commonwealth, for those particularly that had entered the green phase. And so, starting then, for over the next last six weeks, the staff have worked to review the guidance, determine how this could work for the senior centers that the county operates, as well as speaking to center region for theirs at State College. We've worked in hand with facilities management, as well as risk management, as well as administration with Margaret, to kind of talk about all of our needs and what we will have. We've also connected with Chad Joyce for technology, so we thought, looking to add some technology to our senior centers so we can continue to enhance the opportunities that they have there. And so with the guidance from the state, I think what's important to note right away is what they gave us was specific to social distancing guidelines. They have told us that based on your programming space, we have to divide the number of participants we can by 113 square feet. So we actually had to take all of our program spacing, develop, make sure we have the square footage for that, and then divide how many people that actually allows by the state guidance we've given. And so with that is, in our Belfont and Phillipsburg Centers, the maximum capacity we could have is eight individuals. That's including the staff. So really, it's seven members from the public, seven participants and one staff. In Snowshoe would be five, so four participants and one staff. At the Center Hall would be six, five, one staff. And it looks like four, I believe, at Penn's Valley. So we did all of that. We did some social distancing. We've did some signage that Krista helped with. We are also required by the state to screen all of our participants, so we developed a screening tool that the state gave us, and we tweaked it a little bit to do it. Every participant, when they arrive on site, will be asked to fill out the form. We've spoke to transportation, so if somebody would answer a question that we would not be able to allow them to come into the center, if they took transportation, they would be able to go back on the van and be taken home to make sure that we can't allow them into the center. So that was the guidance that we received from the state. We got guidance in turning our meals, so we've developed how we're going to do any meals. Individuals will sit at their own table. Masks will be worn. So that's been told to our participants. Staff have also reached out to participants. When COVID occurred, when the initial phase started there in end of March, we were given guidance by the state to make contact minimally every week with all of our participants at senior centers. Our center managers have consistently been engaged with them. We've asked them about how many of them want to come back. I will tell you that one senior center, the Snowshoe one, doesn't seem to have the participation yet that people want to return, so we're taking that absolutely into consideration to not do that. We've looked at the activities that we do. There wouldn't, there would not be car games or board games, which are a huge part of our senior centers, but ultimately it's the socialization that we get recognized, going to this policy for. Final part, that yesterday, we received further notice from the state, I actually got this from Camp Pendleton, our jurisdiction yesterday, that 40 offices of agings across the state, and I think there's a little over 50 because of joint counties, have reported on their reopening plans, and about 41% of senior centers have reopened across the state. So 41% have already opened. Allegheny, Philadelphia, and Westmoreland have not opened any yet. Those are some of the high-risk areas that they were looking at. So the state is allowing the counties to develop their guidance, be safe, you know, ask participants what they want to do. So it's a fine, it's a nice balance of wanting to give us the guidance to see how we can support our participants, but also not a mandate of you have to be open by a certain date. So our staff have made, kind of gotten us to a point now where we can discuss how we feel about opening. And again, I would say that there's no pressure from our staff, there's no pressure from the state, but it really just comes down to, you know, how we feel about walking ourselves into the senior centers reopening to give that support to individuals if we would want to do that or hold off for a time period longer as we continue to track our COVID cases. That's a very fast overview of what's happening with them. I will also say too, that we have looked at additional cleaning contracts. So we've linked up with, I think, one of the cleaners that do one of the Magisterial District Justice's offices to see if they'd be willing to do the senior center cleaning. Some of our senior center cleaners were individuals that we would be concerned with their age and their health. So we've expanded our search to look for other cleaning opportunities. Our days are also very limited. We're talking anywhere from one to two days a week, and we're also allowing what we call a reset day to make sure there's a day in between for a full cleaning or a full spray-down of the center. for a full cleaning or a full spray down of the center to make sure that there's time for the cleaning to rest and to, and surfaces to be cleaned off. So I don't think we have any center doing more than two days a week on the schedule that I last got, just to make sure that we could stagger cleaning crews as well as just safety and also the number of participants. Center region is themselves looking at how they are going to reopen and are doing the very similar guidelines. We've shared ours with them and they're looking to figure out how they also want to reopen. You know, they have a larger space, so they have to take into account the larger number of individuals that they can serve, as well as the fact that the mall is technically, people can just drop in. So we're being really particular about doing reservations. So people need to be reserved ahead of time and not just stop in. And that includes all of our centers. It's not just State College, but they have a higher rate of drop-ins than our other centers do.
Okay, thank you, Natalie. So, and just clarification, Madisonburg would be one staff and three, three residents or four residents?
I have it that it would be three residents with one staff. I've been having it at four.
Okay, thank you. So in terms of the non-center region centers, we're talking about a total of four, because Snowshoe is not opening at this point, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we've got four staff and 22 residents essentially. Okay. For, so for the not, again, non-center region senior centers.
Actually, can I clarify that, Michael? It's three staff because the Center Hall and Penns Valley Center is one person.
You're right, you're right. Okay. Absolutely, okay. So the total of 25 people that would be coming in and out of these centers throughout the day, in addition to the clean, in addition to the cleaners. So just putting, putting the context there. The, in terms of where the weaknesses would be or, or where COVID would get in, you talked a little bit about the driving, you talked a little bit about the cleaning. Is there any other areas or, again, opportunities for the virus to get into the center that you can think of? Or the other aging centers across the, senior centers across the state have talked about saying, we opened up and we, we needed to change this or we needed to put this protection in place?
We, we have heard, I think, that some of the centers are just struggling with the fact that such a small number to, to allow it to be, you know, beneficial to the participants. So I know that some of them have just struggled with, you know, the guidance that was released last week from the governor saying under 25 people, but really we have to follow the guidance of the square footage. And so that definitely narrows it down to really the number of people that we can have there. The, the Snowshoe one in particular, it's in a public building. There's been a pharmacy there. So I think that was some of the, the concerns of the fact that the participants walked by the pharmacy, which is closing, but it is. You know, Belfont's our secured site, Penns Valley is our secured site. You know, Phillipsburg is within the Phillipsburg Towers residential home. They've actually, the, the center staff have been going in there because of the home-delivered meals. So, but we can lock that space off because it's our space, you know, so to speak there. Center Hall is the most unique one because it comes out of the fire hall. However, we've done a lot of work with the fire department to make sure that they're comfortable, how we would clean, and they, you know, are supportive of us coming back in there to have it because they believe that, you know, they can, you know, we can put everything away, have it done. I think for us, it's been really aware of the food, the masking, you know, I, I think it's getting participants to understand that masks must be worn. And so I think it's going to be a comfort level of both the staff and the participants to be wearing masks all day and how that evolves over time. You know, and, and making sure that, you know, they're, you know, they're able to do what they want to do, you know, at this, at the centers. I think the center staff themselves, you know, they know these people well, they have relationships with them. And so I think they themselves are being mindful of not wanting to do anything to jeopardize anybody. So even if that is waiting for further research, making sure that we've covered our bases, seeing what other counties are doing, I think they, they support that because they, they do know these individuals and residents really well. But at the same time, it is about doing the outreach to them that, you know, we want to make sure that we are connecting with seniors. And, and you know, the, the centers provide a lot of that. They provide a meal, they provide that conversation, they provide that social interaction that can be critical. Hand sanitizers have been delivered there. Again, Lee and Krista have helped with making sure that we have the proper amount of supplies at all of our centers. And again, the, the screening tool would be done every time. So not just once a week or the first time they come back to the center. It's every time they, a person comes to a center, they would be screened prior to walking in the door.
Okay. And then.
Yeah. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Commissioner Pipe. I just had a question. Is the Department of Aging requiring senior centers to open or is that totally at the discretion of the county, each county?
So kind of based on the guidance we got last night, you know, when I reread it, it really seems to be, again, at the discretion of the counties, of the offices of agings. So you have some offices of aging that are nonprofit, you know, based, that operate their senior centers versus the ones that are county oversight, and that's what we are. So that, I think that's why they've had to give us a leeway to say, it really is up to your county, what you can do, what you believe you can provide. But we've got to give you the guidance to do it.
So we. So we could recommend a delayed opening. That's one, one possible recommendation. We could be evaluating the incident, the, the new cases in our county and say, we're not quite ready. Or we also could recommend to the Board of Commissioners opening, but if we see any change in anything countywide in terms of cases, we could pull it right back and, and recommend shutting it down.
We can do, yeah. I, I think the one thought that, that the senior center staff had was the philosophy of, you know, treating our senior centers like our county buildings. You know, we've not, you know, our, our Willow Bank is not just fully open to the public, you know, like it, it has been. It's, you know, people come in, they come in very specifically for business. Would we align ourselves with something like that? You know, so when we officially reopen Courthouse and Willow Bank and whatever, then that's when we align ourselves like we would the senior centers. That was one suggestion to give us a, to give us some goal to reach and not, you know. So that was one of the suggestions the staff have passed along.
That's helpful, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and, and, and to go to that, we could also, if we see cases spike in Belfont that are not attributed to nursing homes or, or jails, we could also make the determination to scale back on that. I think from, from my standpoint, it's, we have to have very, we have to have very strict adherence to the masking, hand washing and social distancing. If, if we've got senior, and the senior center managers can't be laissez-faire about this and sort of, you know, oh, you know, it's, it's fine, no, they're okay, you know, they haven't been out of the house. You know, it has to be extraordinarily strict. And because we're talking about the most vulnerable population when it comes to COVID-19. And in addition to that, I, I, I do feel comfortable with the steps that you've outlined and the steps that you've taken. There is the opportunity to open them, but I would almost be in favor of doing something where instead of just returning to normal, where we were doing it every day in certain centers. I know certainly Center Hall and Penns Valley are staggered, so they're not every day. But in the places where we were doing it five days a week or four days a week, I, I think we might want to start out slow, maybe do once a week, twice a week, just to get, you know, just to work out some of the bugs. Again, not to rush back, but I think just taking our time would be the best way to do it. But, but we do know that there, we don't want seniors to be lonely, isolated, you know, and if there's a cycling through of seniors on different days, that might be good. You know, using technology, if seniors wanted to zoom in to activities that are happening when, while the center is open, if that's something you, you can accomplish. But I think I, I am in favor again of, of opening them, but, but taking our time, being very mindful. And again, if, if a senior, if seniors are not willing to do the social distancing, masking and the hand washing, I mean, that's, that's, we, we have to close the center just because of the, the threat that, that poses. So I'll leave, I'll leave my thoughts there and allow the other commissioners to weigh in and we can get consensus on this.
I guess my, I'll start. One of the thoughts that I had is anybody surveyed the seniors to see if they want to come back, if they feel comfortable coming back?
So, Mr. Dershowitz, we have. We, we've surveyed them across. That's part of the reason that Snowshoe's not going to open is because the participants there did not really portray a direct need to reopen because of some concerns, you know, fears. So we have screened them, we have found out, you know, if participants would be willing to wear a mask. Are they willing to do what we have to do? Do they understand that we can't do games? And so we've done all that kind of surveying to get us to where, you know, what we are today. So we have screened some, some of the, yes, we have.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, since I'm kind of living it right now, I, I would say to, you know, measure twice, but once, proceed slowly. You know, maybe we don't start right out of the gate, opening up five days a week. You know, my mother's probably toward the upper age limit of, of people who visit senior centers. And from a cognitive and definitely a physical standpoint, she's probably just on the cusp of still being able to attend one. And it's, it's difficult. She does not always want to wear her mask. Sometimes she asks, why am I wearing a mask? So I, I think staff has to be mindful that perhaps we do have some seniors who've kind of been on the bubble for a while and they're, they're just, it's just not going to be appropriate for them to have to sit and not play games and, and not do an activity, but have to sit there wearing a mask the whole time. Because obviously, once the mask comes off, you, you never know who could be symptomatic, even at that age. And then suddenly we, we have spread. So let's, if, if staff thinks we should reopen, if most of the seniors at most of the centers are, are fine with reopening, you know, then perhaps we should reopen, but let's do it slowly, carefully and with a lot of caution.
I think what staff would tell you is that they feel they've done the preparation to get us to this point. I don't think they're one way or the other for sure saying like, we absolutely should open or should not. I think they are also very hesitant as well, but they, we've done everything we can to get to this point. So if we don't open for another three, you know, if we decide end of August, we'll, we'll do it. I don't think they, you know, aren't, I think they'd be, I think they would be okay with it. I know they would be okay with it. I think we've just done everything we can to get us to this point of saying, so when and if we should do this. So it's okay if, if we put it off another month or three weeks or whatever. I think they've just done a great job of getting us to this point to have the conversation.
And Natalie, I think, I think we're in a position where we're not saying to delay it. I think, I think we are, the work that's been done is, is meaningful and we're at that point. So, but just from our standpoint is what would be some things that would just close the center right away? If, if X, Y or Z would happen, what would just close the center right away?
So we've also put in here that if a person, obviously, if a person who's attended a center receives a diagnosis of COVID, the center will be closed for 14 days. If a participant cohabitates with someone diagnosed, they are presumed to also have COVID-19 and we would close.
Are they going to be asked every day to certify that? I'm looking, I'm looking at the form here to see if I can, I know the screening, the screening tool would essentially be what you're talking about?
Yep.
Okay.
Question number two, have you or someone you have had contact or living with been diagnosed with a positive test?
Okay.
Have you or someone with whom you've had contact with been asked to self-quarantine? Have you or someone you contacted with traveled outside of the state or country in the last 14 days? And then symptoms too?
Okay.
So yeah, so they actually have taken the stance of, even if you don't test positive, if you're, someone that you live with does, you know, that would be a, a cause for concern for us. We would also monitor Phillipsburg because of the towers well, as well too, just in terms of, of that apartment complex. We, we've done that so far already, we monitor it. But we would do that as well.
Okay, and then how would you envision as we move forward, once we reopen these, let's say next week, a, a, something, a report back to us, just letting us know, you know, how things went or a status? Is that possible? I mean, we don't want to make it too, you know, too difficult to do, but is there a way just where we can know, hey, this is how it went?
Yes, so I actually, the, the human services report that you receive weekly, I've added on the aging tab, that every week they have to list the number of participants that attended each of those senior centers. So I've asked them to, to get ready to start tracking that. So from the prior week before, you'd be able to see that eight people attended Belfont, six different people attended Phillipsburg, whatever the case might be. And then I thought I would also add below that, you know, anecdotal information, if we would close a center, I would work through Margaret to announce that, you know, immediately to Board of that. But we thought we would do some information on that weekly human services report to include the senior centers in it.
Okay.
That would, that was my thought was to combine it into that report.
Okay. Is Commissioner Higgins and Dershowitz, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I like, I like that report. It's very valuable. Let's just keep the amount of extra work to a minimum, just add it in as a few extra lines on the report. Sure.
Okay.
So if I could propose, I would probably propose just giving us two weeks, just in terms of transportation. You know, Dave was ready to go, you know, as well, that's quickly. But I think if we can, you know, have that kind of week of Aug, you know, I can't believe I say August now, but you know, it's August. That week of August, maybe 10th. What would help with that is just we could schedule people out ahead of time, you know, you know, be able to schedule that properly with transportation and also still give us a little bit of wiggle room if anything would occur in terms of, you know, COVID cases being of concern for us, anywhere we'd be able to match up. So just those two weeks, I think, would just give us a little bit of time to, to finalize the, the reservation part of what we have to do. And then that also gives us a date that we can give Center Region.
Okay, thank you, Natalie. And then Dave, just from a transportation standpoint, the vehicles would be sanitized and disinfected prior to those individuals getting on, on the, on a van? And then if there were any trips prior, I mean, are you basically every time somebody gets off the van sanitizing where they sat and all that?
The drivers are taking those precautions, yes, they're wiping things down and then we sanitize, fully sanitize at least once per week. But should we have somebody come on that, that would maybe have a temperature or anything, we would immediately sanitize that van following, getting them back home. As Natalie mentioned, they're going to check them when we get there. If somebody's running a certain temperature, our process will be to take them immediately back home.
And Dave, do any of the windows in any of the vans open?
There are some windows that open above, you know, on the passenger vans, yes. They open for, for fresh air movement, yes.
So I, I would also suggest, you're probably already doing it, but weather permitting, if you had the windows down a little bit to get some good fresh airflow into the vans.
And most all, my drivers open the, the top windows on, on the, the vans for that circulation, yes.
Good.
And just so too, I mean, if there's an opportunity for individuals to go outside, you know, with our senior activities too, we would encourage that as well, you know, to any, any outdoor activities that we can do, just to get that fresh air, that moment of ability to breathe some air.
Absolutely, okay. Okay, so we will then, we have consensus then, we'll be opening these up in the next few weeks and we look forward to hearing how, how it goes and if there's any feedback or necessary adjustments, we'll look forward to working through those. So thank you, Natalie, very much. Thank you very much. Okay, we are at 11 o'clock. We do have a retirement board meeting. I think it's more important however that we get through the. I think it's more important, however, that we get through the CDBG, I'm sorry, CRBG grant conversation for businesses. So we've, we've asked our controller, Jason Moser, to ask CS McKee to bear with us. We'll be right with them. But we, we do, we will return back to the top of the agenda and to discuss that. So under our COVID-19 planning response, we have some items here that are related to the business grant. Headed back there right now on my screen. It's primarily going to be revolving around that business grant. So we know that the work's been done on that. So do we want to give an update on where that Small Business Development Center SBDC grant application is at?
Yes. If I could just start, I am going to hop in front of Mary Kay here. Mary Kay is going to lead us through that conversation on the SBDC. We also do have for the board's review, another cut at our Center County request, and we can send that out after the meeting and everyone can take a look at it. And we also have a draft of the personal travel policy, which we could send after the meeting. And we could regroup to discuss that. But I just wanted to make sure we don't lose those two other items as well.
Okay. Thank you, Margaret.
Okay. So CRBC, BRC, I'll get the letters right someday.
So hello, this is Mary Kay Williams. Thank you very much. We had some conversation on the Tuesday Board of Commissioners meeting about trying to get some funds out to restaurants and bars as quickly as possible, as well as to the small businesses. So yesterday I had a phone call with SBDC, Penn State Small Business Development Center. And that was through collaboration with Commissioner Higgins. And what they have proposed for us is that they are going to, they could possibly lead the effort of doing the application process. And what we've discussed so far is that, and they've given us some applications to take a look at. One is a lengthier version. And then just this morning, they gave us a shorter version. So what I'm going to ask about and ask commissioners to just have some conversation with the approach that we want to take, what, what we were discussing is that we would get the application perhaps quicker to restaurants and businesses. That would be the first round. And the SBDC gave us some estimate numbers about how many restaurants and bars there are in Center County. And the list that they came up with was about range was difficult to narrow down an exact number, but about 835 is the number that I have between bars and restaurants. Keeping in mind that they weren't, those numbers are not as far as there are some duplicates, some bars are restaurants and some restaurants are bars. So we were trying to make some determination of how many, you know, restaurants or bars we thought would even apply. So we were thinking, we don't know that number, of course. So I guess I just really would like to ask the commissioners for any thoughts or discussions about anything before I continue any further. We are really excited to be able to offer relief. Center County Government Commissioners are very, very excited to get money out there. And I know everybody's very appreciative of that. And we're working with this to get it out post haste. So commissioners, may I ask you for your opinions, insight?
Absolutely. That's what we're here for. Absolutely. Yeah. We're happy to, Mary Kay. Since Mark's been doing bulk of the work on this, I was not able to be on the call yesterday. So I'm, I thank both Mark and Steve for doing that. But we'll maybe turn it over to Mark for some feedback at this point.
Sure. Thanks, Mary Kay. And thanks, Steve, for attending the meeting yesterday. I think Margaret was on as well. So it was a good meeting, very productive, and thanks for following up afterwards, Mary Kay. To get into the weeds briefly and then hop back out, the form you sent just a little while ago that says, it actually says employment application? You might want to rename that.
That actually came from SBDC. That's what it said. I found that. It was a PDF, so I didn't have time to correct that. I saw that too, you know.
There's one question near the middle of the form. It's immediately above other funding sources. And it says, is the business a private for-profit or nonprofit business? We're, we're not going to get valid data on that. I think we just need to ask, are you a for-profit business? Because that's what this round is for. I believe nonprofits are going to be a different round with slightly different rules. So I'd ask them to make that a much more definitive question so we actually get valid data off of it. I like the single-page form. The format's nice. Obviously, there's going to need to be some explanatory material and some self-certification. And a document, as Commissioner Dershowitz mentioned, that lists sort of acceptable expenses and non-acceptable expenses. But I think at this point, we're at a critical juncture. Are we kind of considering the first round for bars and restaurants? And then possibly the first round for all other types of businesses? To be more of just a quick mini-grant in like the $3,000 to $5,000 range? In which case, I think that the current single-page form is, is really moving us very far along. If, if we're going to perhaps start with a floor of three to five grand in this round, but potentially get substantially more money, we may need a little longer application to get more data about what do you actually plan to do with the funds? Which in a mini-grant, I think you're much less concerned about that. So those are my quick thoughts at this point. A lot of progress. Love the new form. We could change that one question. But I think the other two commissioners also have to weigh in is, are these first-round ones more of a quick mini-grant, three to five grant to pretty much anybody who qualifies? And maybe in later rounds, we, we give more money to applicants who have, who meet qualifications? Or are we going to give a substantially different amount to different businesses even in a first round? But I think I need to hear what, how my other two commissioners view that.
I would, going, going back to your initial conversation about the question on there, I do think there is some validity in knowing that they are a not-for-profit because there are service clubs that, that have food service that, in, in bars that may apply for this because they've been impacted as well. So that would be one thought on that. The other thought is, I, I don't know exactly what kind of numbers we can give out yet until we see the number of, of applications and how much interest there is. If we have 800 applications, that'll probably be a significantly smaller per, per unit number than if we receive 200, which I think we have the opportunity. And I, whether it's 3,000, 5,000, or, you know, even up to 10,000, I, I think, I think we will have the data in a, in a, the SBDC needs to do other research. In other words, make, you know, follow up with a phone call and ask a couple of questions to make sure that, you know, the, the business is legit and there are, you know, I, I don't think that's a, that's outside the scope of their work in my, my humble opinion if there are questions. But I, I think it's, you know, we need to get moving on this. And I think in, in generally speaking, I, I'm in favor of, of, of the, of the program as it has been laid out.
Yeah, Mary Kay, I, I like the, so from a simplicity standpoint, I think you're on the right track with having a single-page application. On the web, it's going to obviously be, you know, different. But you're going to have those, those basic questions. And then you're going to have at the bottom, it sounds like some certifications about have you attached this? Have you attached that? I do think that on one form, and it sounds like that would be the, I mean, I'm going to bring it up here on my, on my screen. At the bottom where it says, "Application Submission Checklist", there's going to be a signed certification statement. I think on that certification statement, if we would take a lot of the questions that you had in your draft block application that you sent out yesterday, if we just take a lot of those questions and put them in there in terms of, you know, so basically they're certifying that they're, they're following the CDC, DUH guidelines. They're following the, again, there's some gambling activities or adult-oriented in nature activities. Basically, they'll say, they'll just basically sign once to attest to the fact that they're in compliance with everything that we need them to be in compliance with. I think that would probably be how I would go, go through it. Just so they don't have to say yes, no, yes, no to that. They can just sign it once and they're good to go. And, and, and so I think that's how I would move with that. But basically, if we would put out there the single-page app, so I'm thinking about however you do it on the web, you do it on the web. But I'm thinking from a paper standpoint, if they're going to email them in, you'd have the application, you'd have a certification that has all the legalese, all that, and then that FAQ. And then once you have that, that's, that's, that's pretty much the core of it. So I, so I, I would just, from what I'm seeing, I would just move all those other questions, yes, no questions to the certification where they can just certify a yes or no. And then in addition, I agree with what Commissioner Dershowitz said about, we don't know what we don't know. So I'd be hesitant to say, you know, this is going to be a $2 million round or $3 million round or $1 million round until we know what kind of applicants we get. And then once we see the, the, I think it's going to be very enlightening to see and get a report from SBDC after the application window is closed. And they can give it to us periodically throughout that application window to let us know what they're seeing. But once we get that final report about, here's what the need is, here's what the, the businesses are telling us, the restaurant and tourism industry, restaurant bars are telling us, we could then make a determination about how much funds that we're going to put out. I think that's a more, that's a better way to do it. But yeah, so no, I, I like the direction we're going. I think there's just some tweaks here and there, and then we're good to go.
This is Steve. I, I also think there's, it'll be a good barometer for, for the future and other business requests. I think, I think the experience we gain here will, will be highly useful as we make the other applications available to other businesses in the community.
And the commissioners, anything else that I just?
Yeah, from, from an FAQ standpoint, the, I don't know if you've seen the Progress Fund, their small business application that they put out. So the Progress Fund, okay, there, there are 22, yeah, they, they, they're a community development financing institution or CDFI, who was one of the administrators for the $225 million Small Business Grant Program the state put out. And they did a really nice job of an FAQ that exists on there about how the money can be spent, how it can't be spent. And it's specifically for small businesses. And so again, it's a grant, it basically would be very similar to what we're doing. And so they've got a lot of good information on there. Again, I think we're all about not reinventing the wheel and, you know, just borrowing what's out there, attributing it obviously about where we're finding it. But they do, they do a good job of the FAQs. And they're doing a four, four application windows. July, I think they're doing it either every three weeks or whatnot. But they've also said it's going to be, it'll be interesting to see what they get first round because that'll influence how much money they're giving out over these, each of these rounds. So I can send it to you here in the chat that you have that. Yeah, absolutely. Yep. But for my comments, that's all that I had. If you had any feedback or wanted to ask us questions, please feel free.
Yes, I did want to ask, are we talking with this particular round, this very first round that we get these, what I will call mini-grants? Are they going to, are they just going to comprise of restaurants and bars? Just wanted to clarify that.
That's what I would recommend. That way we can, we can isolate this conversation and move it out pretty quickly.
Okay. Commissioner Piper, Commissioner Higgins, do you agree?
Yeah, I would concur from, I think there's some, obviously the restriction, the targeted mitigation the governor put in place is driving this conversation. But I think it's also helpful because they're obviously the ones that are going to be the most hurt. Other businesses, the way they operate are not as, you know, they don't come into customers as much or have that constant interaction. So it's going to, I think from a, just a philosophical standpoint or a policy perspective, they're the ones that would be hurt the most just by the pandemic and the way that the virus is transmitted. But it also gives us a good template when a test drive for the other businesses in the community for us to be able to, you know, work through. So I think, so yes, this would just be for restaurants and bars. I will say, if you go onto the NAIC listing, there's a whole heck of a lot of things that fall under quote unquote, a restaurant. And we're, I think that's another key point about, we're just going to be very, have to be very cognizant of if entities apply that really don't fit into that category, how do we deal with them? And so I think that would just be the only, the only thing that I would think about is, there's someone there that are, like catering is one, there's a few others that are a little, little, you know. So anyway, I, I think, again, we, we just got to, we have to, we can accept them, you know, if they're quasi-restaurant. But we, we need to be sure that we are giving it to the people. Yeah, go ahead, Steve. Yep.
I, I think catering certainly applies. They've been impacted probably as much as anyone. I, I think the, the overall thing is to make sure that it's not somebody who makes jelly in their basement, you know, and sells it out of their kitchen. I mean, I, I think that's the kind of thing we need to be aware of. And I think we can sniff that out pretty, pretty easily.
Not that there's any, we, we are pro jelly, Commissioner.
I am pro jelly, jam and all other food.
We are. I think you understand what I'm saying, though. You know, I think there are, there are going to be those exceptions where we, you know, you know, where we have to find that, that fine line to draw. So, but I think we ought to err on the side of caution. Let the SBDC and, and let our instincts kind of guide us through these, through these applications.
That's. What was your original question from five minutes ago?
Who's Steve?
Oh, Mary Kay's?
Yeah, Mary Kay, I think you had a question about five minutes ago.
Yeah, I just wanted to know if this round, I just wanted to clarify and confirm that this is just for restaurants and bars as first round. That's all I wanted to clarify and confirm.
Correct. Restaurants, bars, and very closely related businesses, possibly things like food trucks. But to Commissioner Dershowitz's point, if you're running a very tiny canning operation in your basement, I think we'd probably put that under regular businesses.
Okay. I don't, I don't want to get into any trouble with, with the jelly and canning industry. So I retract any comment I made about that.
For you, Commissioner, Commissioner Dershowitz.
But I think.
I don't want to submit my choices.
I think Steve had a good point that we, we should just say that the first round of bars and restaurants will be at least several thousand dollars, but not pin the number down because maybe we get 200 qualifying applications, maybe we get 350 to 400 qualifying applications. We don't know what we don't know yet. So just say it'll be at least several thousand dollars, depending on applications and qualifications.
I just have two other questions that I'm going to call it the EZ form that we have that, that came out. By the way, those forms let me please attribute to SBDC and then I did some doctoring of the one. So I give them credit. I just wanted to be frank about that. But on this particular round, we are not going to ask for people to upload detailed financial information. This is going to be quick, simple, easy with not a lot of, like, tax information. Am I correct about that?
So on the.
I would prefer.
So we, we know one of the questions that our Tuesday meeting was from a right-to-know standpoint, regardless of whether or not we put in the tax information, how much of a right-to-know standpoint could entities get of these? I don't know if we got any clarification on that.
I have not. I have not.
Okay.
I think if we ask for a tax ID number, every restaurant is going to have one. Every, every, you know, going to have a sales tax number. I think that, that's legitimate. Those are legitimate questions to, to ask. And that's all. If you go into a restaurant, that's, that's on public display.
Okay.
I, I'm thinking we can hopefully delay an actual decision on that question until a little later. These are more mini-grants where pretty much everybody gets roughly the same amount of money. We're not looking at replacing revenue. I think if we do a later rounds with much larger grants, where we're actually replacing lost revenue, we're going to need some level of documentation about that revenue was actually lost. But I think in this round, we're, we're not going to need that level of detail.
I just have one final question and then any, any other discussion I'm happy to take. Is that if, uh, say I did have a restaurant and I don't, if I had a restaurant and I applied for this, may I come back at a later point and apply for a business grant, or do we not have any comment or thoughts on that now?
It's a great question. It's a good question.
Because I mean, I.
Yeah.
It's a business, uh, I might, do I want to hedge my bets? Do I want to wait for a bigger, uh, you know, a bigger amount? So that's all I ask.
I view this as urgency relief.
Okay.
Yeah, I would, I would, uh, lean toward this being a quick emergency, uh, grant. And that if especially somewhat larger businesses wanted to reapply, uh, later, uh, with much more deep forms to prove they lost revenue, uh, and some couple hundred word plan about what they plan to do with something that's substantially bigger than five grand, that, you know, we could, we could.
Okay, thank you.
I, I see this as something that would help somebody with, as a stopgap, uh, pay the rent, provide, you know, pay for their insurance. You know, buy some food, you know, kind of, kind of keep the, uh, lights on while, uh, while the, uh, the situation has certainly, uh, been kind of thrown at them in a big hurry. So this, this would be an emergency release. Uh, in my, from my perspective.
Thank you. I, I don't have any other, uh, uh, immediate questions, but I'm, I'm very happy to hear any other discussion or, um, comments.
Well, when we're, when we're done with this conversation, I do want to, I do want to have a, a little, a little bigger conversation about, uh, uh, about something else. So whenever we're done, just let me know.
So may I just add, may I add one thing?
Please.
Uh, I just wanted to share with the commissioners, uh, I know that, um, Commissioner Higgins and Dershowitz know this from yesterday, but part of our discussion with that, with the SBDC was to get a memorandum of understanding together between center county government and the SBDC. So just to say that will be forthcoming. They're putting, uh, together their work statements. So we're doing this with, um, anticipating that being in place, but, uh, that, that will be more to follow on that.
And it's just, uh, from a, from a scheduling standpoint, it's seeming to me that perhaps we do roughly a two week round now. Then we do another two week round for a slightly different group. Then we do a two week round for, um, uh, perhaps larger, uh, uh, applications from bars and restaurants. Then we do a two week round for all other types of businesses. That is going to take us almost at the end of September to crank through all these, just very, very, very rough schedule.
Correct. Yes. Yes.
So, and just again, to throw a scenario out there, if we have 500, so if we have the sliding scale 200 to 800 businesses or restaurants and bars that are going to apply for this, if we lower the threshold uh, for information that needs to be provided, we would most likely have more individuals apply. Or more entities apply, which would make it, which may make it more difficult to figure out who should get the money and who shouldn't. That's my, that's my assumption. And if we raise the bar a little bit in terms of the information that needs to be given or, or provided, we're going to have less, which would theoretically, uh, would, would give us more of an opportunity to help the businesses that need help. And so I just, I, I understand we don't want to ask for certain information, but we do want to get enough data that if we do get many applicants, that we can still give it to entities that are in need. I just don't want to get, I don't want to get us in the position where we're giving money out potentially to entities that, um, we're giving the same amount of money out to entities that are not necessarily in the same position. And so if we're using the bar, so basically the data points that we're having right now are, um, uh, if you ha, if you receive other funding. That would be my, is that my understanding? If we go with, we're not going to ask them for any other information, we're basically just asking them, did you receive any loans or grants or anything else, right?
That was on the one application. Yes.
Yeah, even on the one pager, Mike, there's a whole section of other funding sources and it says, uh, have you applied for, been awarded or plan to apply for the idle, the idle advance, the PPP loan or other, uh, disaster loans and grants and, and then the amounts you receive for each program.
Right. And my, my question is, is that enough data to get that to, to make an understanding about who should, who should get the funding and who shouldn't?
I, I, I really think that's, that's going to be the tricky part. I, I'll be honest with you because, you know, it's, um, if somebody is really, you know, I'm going to quote Commissioner Dershowitz, I'm talking about emergency relief. I might have, I as a restaurant may have received some, something else, but I'm still in dire need. So I guess that's going to be the tough barometer to, to determine. I think that's up for, you know, you all to decide.
Well, I think it's quite possible that if we end up, and I'm just, so the numbers aren't too difficult here. Uh, let's say we end up with 200 qualifying applications and 150 of them have not received any sort of state or federal assistance at this point. Boom, that's the first check run. And then if we have 50 more that have received some level of, uh, state or federal funding, but they still qualify and we still have money left over from that round, then you know, we cut a second round of checks in week two and send it to those businesses. I think that meets the, uh, the spirit and letter of the law in regards to prioritizing businesses that have not yet received aid.
Okay.
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 Yeah, no, I just, I'm just, uh, that, that's my, that's my, basically my one, one thing, thing I'm thinking about constantly with this. So, okay. Um, and then from a, uh, one of the things we talked about, this is going back to June, was with the controller's office. The final question I have here uh, was for amounts of funding that we're giving out that are, you know, we talked about that single audit and, you know, federal audit, all that stuff. Um, if the controller, uh, Jason, if you wanted to weigh in in terms of how, how this would, you know, because you're, you're going to be looking at this real time, correct? The fact that we're going to be giving out millions of dollars in business grants.
Correct.
So in terms of, from the, the type of information we're asking here, is it sufficient at this point for this restaurant and bar expedited business grant?
Um, I'd have to, uh, look at that a little bit closer, but I think we still might need to do a pre-award risk assessment. And if Travis is on, he might go to answer that a little faster than I can at the moment, but, uh, I, I think we still need that assessment.
So I, I am on, but I, I don't think for these dollar amounts, we would need to, not if they're, you know, $5,000, $6,000.
There it is.
So, so if we don't, if, so if we don't, we don't know what the amounts are going to be yet, if they're going to be 2,500, if they may be 7,500, depending on how many applicants we get, um, and the need that's out there. So I, that we're, I'm just saying that stating that more as a fact and looking for a response, I guess.
So Travis or Jason, is there a threshold there?
Yes, that's a great, yep, yep.
So this pre-award risk assessment, is there a threshold? Do we, are we not able to give out $8,000, but we're able to give out $7,000? I mean, is there, is there a threshold there that would guide us as far as the awards that we could give out in this emergency relief grant?
So there's not a direct threshold per se. We can internally create like a matrix and, and go from there to give you a general feel. Um, but the bigger problem is that most of these are not going to be considered sub recipients at this point. They're just going to be a recipient. If the fund's not necessarily being earmarked to then say, you have to go out and do XYZ with this money. You know, it's more of, if it's an emergency relief and they need to pay rent, they can pay rent if they need to pay the power bill, the power bill, whatever. As long as we're not getting very technical with the, you must go out and buy the spinning masks and give it to these people, these workers. I think they're not going to be considered sub recipient, which means we don't need to monitor them.
Does that mean then in, I, I'm always going back to November or December when we're looking at audit process. Does that mean that we will be uh, okay as far as the, like any sort of auditing from this grant or will, will be okay with the, as you're talking about the sub recipient and such?
As long as we have the, the list of, you know, all the payments and we can justify a little bit, you know, why they got it, which the whole application process seems to be doing, um, I don't foresee any audit problems coming from that.
Okay. Thank you. I, I'll follow up with the controller's office at a later point because I'd like to talk a little bit about that. Um, just as far as, uh, you know, documentation and things, do, do we need to go back to them and ask them any more questions? And so I'll follow up and not take any more of the commissioner's time on that, but I'll follow up with, uh, Jason and Travis then, please.
We, we want to recognize the fact that we are building the car as it's going down the road. All right. And so, look, I, I, we appreciate every, what everybody's doing. Uh, you know, this is not, this is not ideal. Uh, we, we would rather, if we could catch our breath, go forward, catch our breath, but, um, so thank you. We're building the car mid-road and we're, you know, we're almost, we have the wheels almost on it. So.
Yeah. And I, the only thing I really just want to recognize is I want to recognize the commissioners as well as, uh, Margaret and, uh, the partnership with SBDC. Um, and also I really want us to always keep in mind that even though we are building this and we're going down the road, there's a lot of people that really need help and they're going to be very grateful. And so this is really good, really good news. So like, let's not ever lose sight of that for, for folks. So thank you.
Absolutely. We need, we do need to find the joy in it and, and, uh, absolutely, you're absolutely true, Mary Kay. Absolutely right. Um, uh, any other discussion on this, uh, this topic?
Yeah, actually I have, I have, uh, just one and that is, you know, we have, uh, what I would consider several large requests and, and large issues, uh, beyond just the, the business community. And I'm thinking specifically, uh, Mount Nittany, Penn State, CPI, there's a few of those big ones out there that we got, you know, we had, you know, input on a while back. And I think it would behoove us to start that conversation as well. Uh, what we can do to help those big, those, those big ones and, and those big requests. Uh, cause that'll be an entirely, that, to me, that's an internal process. We don't need SBDC or anything for that. That's one that, uh, that Mary Kay, you know, in our office needs to look at and figure out what the appropriate level of funding is and, uh, get that process moving. And I would suggest we start that now as well. So.
And, and just so you're aware, what I, uh, Margaret put together, um, and Krista Davis put together a really, uh, great process as far as the documentation of this, and an Excel spreadsheet and some documentation. So I'm working on that today, trying to take a look at what I would consider the, the request that came in and so we just kind of know where are those chunks of requests. And so I hope to have that completed no later than noon tomorrow. So I could get that to you. So then that will start the conversation, uh, part, please.
Yeah.
Good. Well, that's.
Yeah, I, um, equally, equally so. I think we are at the point now where we can probably give our municipalities an understanding of how much they're going to receive. Uh, we can also give an understanding to, um, uh, the, uh, some of the tourism related entities that have been hit the hardest, um, the Grange Fairs, uh, I, I think, I think, and also the economic development entities that played a critical role in supporting the businesses during that time. Um, thinking of the downtown chambers, the, that's the, uh, uh, Mochan Valley, uh, CBICC. There were a lot of, there's a lot of expenditures they've had related to, uh, uh, what they've done. And, uh, so I would agree that we can, yeah, I agree that we, we should, um, uh, can, we should not just focus on this right now, but also, uh, look at those discussions. I think next week we could probably have a little bit more broader discussion. Um, looking at other allocations. Uh, so I, I, I certainly agree with that, Commissioner Dershowitz. I think it's a good idea. I would just say if we could maybe just pin this up, um, you know, get, get that, get this done, um, and released. I think that would be good before we jump too, too much further into that conversation, but we shouldn't wait on it. I, I absolutely agree.
Right. So the.
I'm working on this simultaneously, so I appreciate that. I apologize, interrupted Jim, Commissioner Higgins.
So, uh, yeah, I think the other two commissioners covered those points very well. I think we can potentially delay a little bit on the processes for, um, the smaller to medium sized nonprofits. Because I think we can take what we're learning from, um, the application process for the restaurants and bars and possibly other smaller businesses and then, uh, use what we've learned for the application process for the nonprofits. So we could maybe delay that, that, uh, work until we've got more data from the first round.
Thank you.
Okay. So we'll look forward to having a work session either Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday, or maybe multiple days uh, to get some more feedback broadly on the other 14.7, how we're going to spend that. Uh, so, okay. Uh, we do want to recognize the fact that we had a retirement board meeting 36 minutes ago. Our controller did notify CS McKee and I believe our treasurer that we were going to be finishing this up. I know we have other items here, but we may have to wrap back to those at a later point. Uh, so, uh, Margaret, if you could just detail what those were again, or, or just, what were they? They were the policy on vacation and what was the other one?
Yeah, it's a personal travel, is policy on personal travel. And that's, uh, COVID-19 broadly. And then under the CRBG, the County Relief Block Grant, the center county government's proposal, which we, um, would need to look at again. Uh, last week you received the first uh, proposal, more work has been done. Uh, we're moving toward a, a final proposal, but that could be, uh, next week.
Well, I, I mean, you know, obviously we're going to get into, we have to get over to retirement board, but this, this afternoon could be a possibility where we uh, work on some of this if, um, uh, if we wanted to maybe work with Natalie Smith to see if we have any time available this afternoon, that might be helpful.
Uh, it would be without me, uh, but that's fine.
Okay.
Other people can carry on. I have, um, uh, fairly significant contact tracing meetings this afternoon with the Department of Health and other entities at one, three and four this afternoon. So.
Oh, that's, that we, yeah, we.
It can, it can go on without me. Krista has put the information together.
Yes, I'm, I'm. Hi, I'm available this afternoon until around 3:30. So, um, I'd be happy to share the updated um, spreadsheet with you. Still a work in progress, but open to any ideas if you're interested.
Okay. Thanks, Krista. Krista. Um, yeah, let's, let's see if we can, if, if Mark and Steve are amenable to that, we could try to do that.
I think my afternoon might be a little messed up. Matter of fact, my morning's messed up here. I might not even make the retirement board, but I, I will see if I'm available later on. Just let me know. You know, what schedule you have in mind.
Okay. At the very least, we can send that out. We could at least send the, the policy and the, uh, um, spreadsheet out and we would at least have that. And if we can work something out, yes. But if all three of us can't be there and I had Margaret, even you not being there, I think we may just, we just may just kick this to next Tuesday. Why, why, why don't we do that? But at least let's, let's send the information out. Okay.
I would appreciate being in the conversation about the county government piece if we could work that through. Um, I might be able to do a half an hour this afternoon, but Krista, you and I will work it out. So.
Sure.
Yeah, that sounds good. Let's get those documents out there so we have some time to review them. And, uh, yeah, my schedule today, I might be able to slip in a half hour somewhere, maybe an hour. Um, but yeah, next Tuesday would be better.
Oh, one other thing before I forget in, in regard to, uh, all this COVID, uh, 19 business. Uh, we have a lot of PPE coming in over the next few weeks. And I, I was just thinking last night, do we have a place to store all the masks and all the, all the gear that we have coming in, or do we have to make arrangements for that and pay for it through this, uh, COVID grant?
So it would be helpful if, um, we could, uh, talk with Jeff about exactly what he's, uh, what's coming in, uh, and we can find other locations. I'm thinking that, uh, we've got the two houses. We've got the, uh, Filmsburg MDJ office, if we've gotten those, uh, election machines out of there. So we can work with him to, to see what the, uh, exact space needs are.
And I have a meeting with him this afternoon, he and his team at two o'clock. So I certainly can ask him about that.
Yeah, whatever it is that we need to do, and if we have to rent space or, I mean, I, I don't know if we're talking about, you know, a, a, a warehouse or whether we can send them in our little one way or another, we have.
Absolutely. No, it's a good point.
Michael, if I may, I, I spoke with Jeff yesterday afternoon and, and we offered, you know, I offered some of our garage space here as well. So uh, you know, not knowing exactly how much he has, uh, we did talk about that and he knows our facility here. So we did offer some of that for, at least to get us as a, you know, temporarily till we figure out other arrangements, but we certainly have adequate space here to take on some of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. All right. Uh, so we will, uh, any, any other items to come before the board before we look to adjourn this meeting? Okay, hearing none, we'd look for then a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at 11:41.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, we are adjourned. All right, we'll see who we, we'll, we'll see whomever we can in the retirement board meeting. Thanks all.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.